Okay, public participation accessibility for the March 9th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting pursuant to Executive Order N-2920 executed by the Governor of California on March 17th, 2020 and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission scheduled for Tuesday, March 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM will allow for members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, we'd like to start our regular meeting, our Paramount Planning Commission meeting, March 9th. It is 6:04, and we all stand. And can I get a pledge allegiance with Luis? For Luis?
Please place your right hand over your heart.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call of members, please?
Commissioner Bautista?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Here.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Here.
Okay, can we review the last month's minutes and get an approval in a second, please?
I move to approve the minutes from February 9th meeting.
And I can move, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago? Yes. John, any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, we move on to new business, public hearings, conditional use permit number 898. We have a request by Atella International to install a 9,000 gallon vertical nitrogen storage tank for frozen plant-based food manufacturing at the 6,300 block of Alondra Boulevard or 6,305 Alondra Boulevard in the M1 light manufacturing zone.
Yes, sir. As you mentioned, this item is a request by Atella International to install a 9,000 gallon vertical nitrogen storage tank for frozen plant-based food manufacturing at 6,305 Alondra Boulevard. The applicant has operated in the Paramount Business Park, I'm sorry, the Paramount Business Center since 2015. There is an existing 9,200 gallon liquid nitrogen tank at the site, and the proposed tank will enhance production of food. Assistant Planning Director John King will give you more details.
Thank you, John. Director Carver, thank you. Commissioner Chair Brago and commissioners, exciting to be here in person.
Yep.
So get right into it. Director Carver gave a really good summary. So it is a second tank, second of two tanks. It's that business park across Alondra from Home Depot, and it's in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. The building that the proposed tank would be right behind is a 6,609 square foot building, and they also lease an adjacent 10,876 square foot building, and they're side by side. They, Atella International, they really are a success story. With the growing popularity of plant-based foods, fake meat basically, you know, Beyond, what is it, Beyond Beef and Impossible Burgers, products like that, they're doing very well, and we're proud to have them in Paramount. They have, they actually have over 300 employees at the site. They have about 160 during their peak shift. And with that success, they really need to improve their efficiencies, and that's why they're applying for a second of two of these tanks. They operate Mondays through Fridays and Saturdays as needed, 6:30 in the morning until 11:30 at night. They have a few shifts. You can see their logo here, their new logo. They're in the process of rebranding as Tattooed Chef. So a few photos here. On the left is an aerial photo of the business park, and you see that that border is actually the city of Paramount border. To the left of that, or which is to the west, is the Los Angeles River and then the 710 freeway. And then to the right or to the east is City of Compton, Dominguez High School. In this property, there's a number, there are a number of buildings, and the subject building, the one we're talking about, is highlighted in blue, and you can see the shaded area behind it where the proposed tank would be. So the right side, we have two photos. The top photo is the front of the building. The bottom photo is the backside. You'll see the existing tank there. That's a 9,200 gallon tank, and the proposed tank would be right next to it where that corrugated metal you see is. And here's a view. This slide shows the elevation, so side by side. Again, 9,000 gallons, 29 feet in height, and it's proposed to be 10 feet in diameter. Just, yeah, very similar to the other one. And I'll just go back one more slide so you can see the before and after. So analysis, well, back to the use. This is for cooling, for their, they focus on frozen food. It keeps temperatures low, and has to be handled with care. There would be a host of fire department requirements. This would also be reviewed by their hazmat division, their petrochem division, petroleum and chemical division, and as was the previous tank that's been there since 1993. And also, our city building and safety requirements would have to be met, and ongoing inspections would, I think it's, I believe it's annually with the fire department to ensure safety. It's an outdoor location. These have to be outdoors, and there'd be no, upon review of this application, there'd be no, it's determined there's no possibility of creating any significant environmental effects and no impacts to sensitive resources. There is a condition of approval included to either remove or legalize an unpermitted rear attached canopy, and there's a timeframe included in the condition of approval that we think, we believe is fair and justified. So with that, we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in favor or opposed?
Nobody in favor or opposed.
Okay. Any questions from our commissioners? No questions. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Condition use permit number 898?
So moved.
I'll second the motion to close the hearing.
We have a first and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. Okay, the next item is to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20042 approving the request by Atella International to install the 9,000 gallon vertical nitrogen storage tank for the frozen plant-based food manufacturing. Can we get an approval?
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve.
Sparza will second it.
We have a first and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. Okay, next item is conditional use permit number 902. A request by Victoria Palmer, Palmer Family Childcare Center to expand an existing license, large family childcare into residential childcare center at 15555 Brighton Street in the R1 single family residential zone.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this item is a request to expand an existing home-based childcare facility at 15555 Brighton Street. The applicant currently cares for 14 children and is requesting to expand to 28 children. State law limits how a city can regulate home-based daycare facilities and only allows the implementation of minor regulatory requirements. Associate Planner Ivan Reyes will go over the item for you.
Thank you, Planning Director. Good evening, Commissioner Chairs and members of the commission. I'm here to present conditional use permit number 902 for Palmer Family Childcare The request is to expand an existing licensed large family childcare center into a residential childcare center. The address is 1555 Brighton Street. It's in the R1 single family residential zone. The site is 7,560 square foot lot, and the house measures at 3,675 square feet. Just to give you some background on Palmer Family Childcare, they've been in operation since 2017. They are currently licensed under the Community Care Licensing Division of the California Department of Child Services. The state categorizes them as a large family childcare with a maximum capacity of 14 children, and due to this use, the state law limits city restrictions or denials for childcare. Here's a description of the business. It is, their hours of operation are from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Mondays through Fridays. They will have a director and floor employees. As part of the state regulations, they're proposing to have a maximum capacity of 28 children. Their age ranges from months to 12 years of age, and on average, a family brings in three to four children. Pickup and drop off times occur at various times throughout the hours of operation. Here's a view of the site. The project location is at 15555 Brighton Street and is directed west on Brighton. Here's a close up of the floor plan. As you can see on your left-hand side, it is the first floor, which has three bedrooms, a family room, a den, and a living room. I want to highlight that the room in yellow is for staff room, and it's dedicated for just employees only. The blue indicates where the childcare services will be provided. Moving on to the second floor, it's comprised of three bedrooms, and again, the blue indicates where the childcare services will be provided. As part of this application, a traffic study was conducted by the Environment Planning Development Solutions to evaluate the proposed expansion into a residential childcare center. The consultant focused on the expected increase in on-street vehicle parking and any potential impact to the traffic queuing at a nearby intersection of Alondra Boulevard and Gundry Avenue. In summary, out of four total staff members in the expanded childcare facility, three staff members would travel to the location from their respective homes. Therefore, the driveway can accommodate three vehicles and can accommodate the parking for all staff members. The expansion will allow for three more families to benefit from this established childcare service. The traffic study also evaluated the traffic conditions, focusing on queuing and vehicle delay. As part of the report, in conclusion, the project would not result in any impacts to the level of service or queuing at the intersection of Gundry Street and Alondra Boulevard. And you can see from Table 1, this is a project trip generation with the total existing trip generation in the AM peak hours, which was at 7:45 AM, and at PM peak hours, which was at 4:30 PM. And it also has the total existing plus the project trip generation numbers of vehicles in and out. And here's pictures of the existing conditions of the main home. So in summary, this type of use will have minimal parking and traffic impacts according to the study, the traffic study that was conducted. It is a use that benefits the residents in the community. No history of neighborhood complaints or code enforcement cases for this, for this property. And as I mentioned before, the city has limitations based on state law requirements for this type of use. Therefore, the recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number PC 21003 and approve conditional use permit number 902. And this concludes my presentation. We have to answer any questions?
Thank you, Ivan. Okay, this is a public hearing, so if we have anyone that's in favor or opposed, John?
Nobody in favor or opposed.
Any questions from our commissioners? Any questions?
My only question was the parking and the possibility of neighbors, but you touched on it. As long as there's no complaints.
I do have a question. What's the classification that they're going from and they're going to? 25 children seems like a lot for a single-family residence, although I do see it's 3,500 square feet.
Yeah, so the state allows for up to 14 children to be viewed, as long as they have, they meet the minimum employees, which they are exceeding. On the report, there's one ratio of one teacher to one aide for every 28 children, so they're going to have two assistants and two teachers, which compromises for employees to oversee this. And again, it's part of the state regulations, as long as they're complying with the state law, which is regulating this use, they are in compliance with that.
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the 14 categorized and then the 28 categorized as?
Categorized as the large?
Large family or?
Because they're already a large family, right?
Right.
So what are they going to?
Well, they're gonna, they're proposing to have the maximum of 28. So they currently have 20 in their roster, but in case they were to expand their roster of child, they want to meet the minimum, the maximum amount of 28.
And what are those called? What are those two categories called?
One is large childcare, which is now, and then they're moving to a childcare center.
Oh, so becoming a childcare center?
Yeah.
Instead of a family center?
Yeah.
Okay. But now they have 20. I thought the current was 14 maximum for them.
Yeah, they're adding six, six more children to their roster.
So they're going to 20, there's going to be a maximum of 28?
Yes, correct.
You're good, George?
It's good. My only concern is the residents. How would the city, has anybody, have they dealt with any complaints from a childcare facility that large in a residential community?
We don't have one that large. We have one, we have several that are up to 14 children right now. They've been operating at 14 children. In that neighborhood, there haven't been any complaints. So this will be a little bit new for us.
I just want to clarify for me. First, you mentioned that it was up to 14 and now up to 28. So we're going from the maximum allowed, 14 to 28, correct?
Yeah, to potentially, in the future, they could have the maximum allowed for 28.
And I do, I share the same concern that I think 28 children is a lot for a residential facility. But however, I have walked through that area and I have friends in that neighborhood, so there seems to be always parking in the neighborhood. A lot of people do work through the day, and I never really see an issue with parking there.
I have a question regarding the, did they advise the neighborhood, the neighbors around with a letter or something that they were going to double it?
Yeah, so I was, I was-
I mean, before they were 14, excuse me, before they were 14 and there's no complaints. But now when they're going to double it, that's my, one of my concerns. My other concern is have they checked about sexual offenders in that area? Have they checked everything on that? I mean, they do that, you know? So, and also, like on sweeping day. I mean, they say they don't have a problem. So, I mean, we have, where I live, they have, sometimes they have a problem on sweeping day. They're moving their cars here or there, you know? So that's also one of my concerns.
Yeah, no, yeah, thank you, thank you for your concerns. I was informed that the applicant actually did go door-to-door to the neighbors on that street, pretty much indicating that they're going to be operating this and kind of in good faith to make sure that the neighbors were okay. There's something between the applicant and the property owners. As far as the parking, they're, according to the study, the traffic study, they're going to be accommodating the parking on their, on their site. So the street, the off-street parking relatively won't have much of an impact, which is just the neighbors. And as far as the-
As far as, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, as far as the, the, looking into the child, the sexual predator, that's state mandated, so they're, they should be in compliance with that, those regulations.
And Commissioner Sparza, if I could just add, this was a public hearing, so we sent out the public hearing notices to residents, to property owners and tenants within 500 feet of this, of this property. We didn't receive any negative comment on the public hearing notice.
And this was my concern, because I've heard of other cities where they set up something like this, and all of a sudden they say, oh, there's a sexual offender down the street and so forth. So that's, because you're doubling it. I mean, that's why I say the neighbors, they're okay with it.
Yeah, the neighbors are okay with it too, because that seems like a lot. But the good thing is that the parking is not going to be for the, it's only going to be for the staff. How many staff did they have before?
Two.
Currently?
Two.
So they're going from two to three, including the owner, that makes it four, right?
Yeah, correct.
Well, if the neighbors are okay with it, and they're okay with, they're okay with it, I don't see anything.
As long as they have two cooks now, so.
I mean, most-
That seems like a full-time job there.
The parents are going to go drop off their kids and go to work, so.
Yeah. So, I mean, I see that's a good thing for the community, because you need childcare centers. I just never heard of one with that many, so it was a little concerning. But if the neighbors are okay with it, there's not a parking issue, I guess we'll deal with it when it comes, if there are any complaints.
Pretty big house, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll deal with it.
We're good?
I'm okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close this public hearing for conditional use permit number 902?
I'll motion to close the hearing.
And I will second that.
Thank you. We have a first and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. Now, can we get a motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 21003 for the request by Victoria Palmer, Palmer Family Childcare Center to expand to the existing licensed large family childcare into the residential childcare center on the 15555 Brighton Street in the R1 zone?
Just Commissioner Bautista will make a motion.
Thank you. We have a first.
Sparza?
We have a first, we have a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. Next item is oral reports, oral report, excuse me.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Brago and commissioners, we did not have any items on the city council agenda last week.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any comments from our city attorney?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. Any comments from our, from our fellow commissioners, commissioners?
No further comments.
Staff?
Yes, I wanted to introduce a new staff person that we have sitting over next to Valerie. This is Janet Ramirez. She is office assistant for the planning department. In addition to her office assistant duties here, Janet works as a property manager for Beachfront Property Management. With over seven years of clerical and office experience, Janet's proficiency in responding to customer inquiries in person and over the phone is extensive, and Janet is a Paramount native, so just wanted to welcome Janet.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, John. Let's see here, I think that is it. Our meeting is adjourned. It is 6:27. Our next meeting will take place on April 13, 2021, 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Brago?
Yes.
Board Member Bautista?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza?
Here.
First item is approval of minutes of February 9th, 2021. I need a motion of approval of minutes.
Commissioner Bautista, I'll second the motion.
Do we have a first?
And a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we have a first? I don't know.
I heard a first from over there.
Did you second it? A motion to approve?
Thank you. Board Member Brago?
Yes.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza?
Any public comment?
No public, no public comments.
Okay, new business, item two is ERA number 20016, and that's a request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T Mobility for small cell wireless installations on utility poles in the public right-of-way adjacent to 8002 Rose Street in the RM multiple family residential zone and 8208 Century Boulevard in the R1 single family residential zone.
Yes, Board Chair Sparza and board members, this application is a request by New Singular Wireless, doing business as AT&amp;T for two small cell wireless installations on utility poles in the public right-of-way. As the state limits how we can regulate daycare facilities, the federal government limits how we can regulate small cell wireless installations, and John King will give you the presentation on this item.
Thank you, John, and Board Chair Sparza and, and board members. AT&amp;T Mobility, so this is a request, as I mentioned, to install and operate small cell wireless installations, release myself, installations on utility poles adjacent to the public right-of-way, or in the public right-of-way adjacent to Rose Street, 8002 Rose, which is Rose and Paramount, it's RM zone, and 8208 Century Boulevard in the R1 zone. And the idea for this is for telecommunications, so we have improved networks and enhanced service. And just go through both proposals. This is the one at Rose and Paramount. It's more so on the Rose side. On the left side is how it looks now, and on the right is how it will look. Basically, more into what Director Carver was saying is, we can't really get into, we are not, we don't have the authority to review like radio frequency or anything like that. It's more aesthetics. And we worked with the, in this case, we worked with the applicant to go from a traditional sodium lamp, like on the left, to an LED lamp, which is a lot more energy efficient and really supports the city's goals for being a sustainable city, being a green city. So you'll see, it's more of a flat kind of, kind of a lamp look. The height of the pole is 22 feet 9 inches, has the cap, the topper on top, five, five and a half feet, which includes the, the radio equipment. So the total height is 28 feet 3 inches. And we're, we worked with the applicant to make sure that there's no extra, like those above-ground utility boxes, it's more at the surface level, that's what we're looking for. So you don't really see anything on the sidewalk. You really want to look for aesthetics reasons and accessibility sidewalk access. Here's the other side, similar. This is on Century, again, an LED lamp. This one is 29 feet 3 inches on the pole, five and a half feet for the, for the top, total height 34 feet and 9 inches. So that contains same thing, antennas and radios. And then again, the vault is, would be surface level. Public Works, the Paramount Public Works Department would have to, well, the applicant would have to submit a, for an encroachment permit with the Public Works Department, the Public Works Department would issue it. The county, Los Angeles County Public Works Department also has some permitting purview. The installations would utilize the existing infrastructure, and the design is intended to minimize, again, the visual, the aesthetic impacts to the best we can. And this is in compliance with FCC, the FCC regulations, it would not generate vibration, noise, or other nuisances. And again, this is, in the end, is to help us out with our, we're using data more and more. So we're recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All righty, anybody?
I have a question. Yes, Commissioner Bautista, how many of these installations are we looking at? Maybe I missed it, but?
In this case, it's two. To date, that's, that's a good question. Just throwing out a number, I'd say 12. We have about 12 to 15 so far. Last, 2020 was a quiet year, maybe it was because of COVID, I'm not sure, but we can anticipate more in the, in the coming months.
And they're all going to be in the- And they're all gonna be in this light pole type of fixture, or they're gonna change aesthetically? So maybe some in buildings or other?
Most of them are utility poles. Some are on wood, wood light poles with, you know, the wires. Some are, go on existing poles. Most are actually replacement poles, such as this one.
Thank you.
I do have a question on the diagram. There was an arrow pointing said vault. There was nothing there, so is that where it's gonna go, or is it underground?
That's, that's exactly right. It's basically underground, surface level, so it's-
That's great.
Doesn't look like a refrigerator out there.
Okay, I know you mentioned during the presentation about a vault box. I was wondering if that's gonna go there, or that's replacing the old vault boxes. Got it.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I need a motion in order to approve a request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC doing business as AT&amp;T for small-cell wireless installations on utility poles in the public right-of-way adjacent to 8002 Rose Street in the RM multiple-family residential zone and 8208 Century Boulevard in the R1 single-family residential zone.
This is Board Member Gutierrez. I'll go ahead and motion to approve?
Weisenberger seconds.
Board Member Brago?
Yes.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Okay, we call up to item number three. That is ERA number 21003. And that's a request by Elizabeth Astarachia. Hope I said that right now. Blue Velvet Studio for McGraw-McGraw USA Machinery to construct a 4,297-square-foot two-story industrial building at 15359 Illinois Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone.
Yes, Board Chair Esparza and board members, this item is a request to construct an industrial building at 15359 Illinois Avenue. This is a former location, many, well, not many years ago, but numerous years ago, of Gillens Market. The Development Review Board approved a similar proposal at this site in 2019, but the property owner was unable to start the project prior to the end of the one-year approval period. John King will give you more details.
John, thank you, board members. McGraw-McGraw USA Machinery, so they're based out of South America. Actually, I actually forget which, which country, but, so they're, they want to bring their, they make machinery, and they have clients here in, in the United States. So hence the USA tack on to their, their main name. And so here they want to, and it's a showroom. There would be no industry, no manufacturing, but basically a showroom. So that, within a 4,297-square-foot two-story building at the northwest of Illinois Jefferson, 5,000, the lot is 5,000 square feet. And, and as Director Carver mentioned, this is, this really is a redo. It was approved by the Development Review Board, November 2019. And your typical conditions include a one-year approval period, which lapsed. The owner was going back and forth on whether to continue with the same designer, the architect, for the architectural plans. And in the end, decided to retain her, retain her services, so she's back on. And the same, it's essentially the same project. Here's a photo of how it looks. This was taken last week. So the former Gillens Market has been vacant. I'd like to say 2013 it's been vacant. There were some number, number of offers to, or ideas, you know, that'd be a sandwich shop, and a few things that just did not work out. So the, the property owners ended up selling, and this owner is ready to go with, with their proposal. Here's the site plan, so you can see it's more or less a square building with some access off of Illinois and also access off of Jefferson. Plenty of green, there's plenty of landscape proposed. It would be drought-tolerant landscaping, again, meeting our goals for sustainability in Paramount. And this is how it would look. Here's a nice rendering, and so it's a very contemporary-looking building. You see those decorative louvers facing Illinois, large storefront windows, plenty of vines and greenery on the wall, which, you know, it's attractive. It absorbs dust and, you know, particulates in the air. So greenery does a good job of that. And not only that, there's been a history of, unfortunately, some vandalism on the walls in that area, so you don't, you won't have to worry about that once the vines make it all the way to the, to the top of that side. So we think it's a good project, and we recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Not me.
No questions.
No questions for me?
Nope. Need a motion in order to approve a request by Elizabeth Astarachia Blue Velvet Studio for McGraw-McGraw USA Machinery to construct a 4,297-square-foot two-story industrial building at 15359 Illinois Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone.
Board Member Brago, I won't make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Bautista will second that motion.
Board Member Brago?
Yes.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Item four, any comments from board members?
No.
Staff?
No, sir.
The Paramount Development Review Board adjourned until April 13, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
What's up?
Thank you. Like to call to order the Paramount Economic Development Board for March 9, 2021. Roll call, please.
Board Member Brago?
Here.
Board Member Esparza? Board Member Gutierrez?
Present.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Here.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Here. Approval of minutes? We get a motion to approve the minutes from February 9?
Commissioner Bautista will make a motion to approve the minutes?
I will second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Board Member Brago?
Yes.
Board Member Esparza? Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Many public comments tonight, John?
No public comments.
Okay. Item number two, oral reports.
Yes, John King will give you a report on broadband internet access.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Weisenberger, board members. So broadband internet, you know, there's, that's basically the platinum level of internet access. And this really, in terms of equitability, being equitable throughout the state and getting the same type of access throughout, that's, that's really the heart of this discussion. Get some background, 2007, the Public Utilities Commission, they authorized the California Advanced Services Fund, CASF. And then it was signed into, into law by Governor Schwarzenegger, by SB 1193, that kind of put it all together. Purpose of all this is to bridge the, what we call the digital divide. It is kind of a fact, you know, the internet is everywhere, but there, for whatever reason, it's not 100%. There are many homes, and we know this more so going through the last year with, with COVID and, and home-distance learning and, and children, some children having better access than others. The, the digital divide is real. And this is to, you know, we're the Economic Development Board, so the main thrust here is it promotes economic growth, job creation, and the substantial social benefits of advanced information and communications technologies. So I'm calling for the deployment of high-quality communications out, out to all Californians. That CASF funding, we found, and this legislature has found, is not entirely accessible to most communities, to, or to all. And the current structure is behind a number of other economies. So, just want to put this out there, there's a, there's a bill, Senate Bill 4, SB 4 is the Broadband for All Act, and it's authored by Senator Gonzalez, is our, our local representative. And again, COVID-19, that's, that really does highlight the inequities of internet access. You hear about teachers and school children, children getting kind of knocked off their connection. And this, this bill would require the Public Utilities Commission to expand the CASF program, creating a more equitable funding mechanism and allowing for, for local governments like cities and counties and service providers to apply for grants and to better leverage other funding opportunities, and those opportunities being like federal opportunities. Expands eligibility areas and to finance higher broadband speeds and raise the standards of approved projects. Here in Paramount, we do have a legislative platform that the city council adopted a few months ago, very recently. And this, this bill aligns with that legislative platform. Mayor Lemon's actually signed a letter of support last month. And so as the bill goes to the works, we are tracking it and hoping that it, that it does go through, gets signed by the governor. With that, Paramount would be able to apply for grant funding, be better positioned to do so. And then improved services will, will again create reliable communication networks for essential services and, and everybody. The keyword is "all." So you can see, here's a map. This is from the CASF portion of the Public Utilities Commission. And you can see it's very limited, those orangish-yellowish areas, not sure what color that is, where they are CASF-eligible. So one thing is to expand eligibility areas. And I'm looking at this, and I, and I see a lot of this is, a lot of these areas are mobile home parks in California, in, in Paramount. There is a mobile home park called The Californians. I think that's why I mentioned that. So that's really it. Just want to give you a little overview there and, and let you know where the city stands on SB 4. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right, thank you, John. Okay, move to item number three, comments. Board members, any comments? How about from our staff tonight, any comments? Okay, in that case, we will move to adjournment of the Economic Development Board for this evening. We'll meet again April 13 at 6:00 PM.